Okay, let's call this meeting to order. We could have a roll call.
Mr. Giwello.
In attendance.
Mrs. Haff, here. Mr. Holden.
Present.
Mrs. Zasinski, here. Mr. Manotti.
Here.
Mr. Opel. Dr. Ritter.
Here.
Mrs. Yolesh.
Here.
And Kate Koutash is excused.
Okay, at this time, if we could all please rise and salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made in second, is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Presentations and recognitions. Dr. Coet.
Mr. Chairman. We and Shelton are very fortunate to have very compassionate teachers and administrators and students, and by that, as part of our community. And it's something that makes Shelton a very special place. Unified sports is something that is actually unifying, and it brings people together, brings our students together, our regular, and students with kids with special needs together in activities that are very fruitful and very life-affirming, and it's something that we should be very proud of. Recently, thanks to the hard work of our team, which includes, of course, Dr. Smith, John Niski, Karen Ivancek, and Mike Ambidella, as well as students, we were awarded a very special recognition. And I'd like to ask that group to step forward, please, to the microphone here, as well as our guests from the national organization, as well as our students.
Good evening, thank you, Dr. Coet. I just want to briefly explain a little bit about our Unified Sports Program, so that everyone is somewhat familiar. This is about the 13th year that Shelton High School has had a Unified Sports Program. We have teams in basketball and also track and field. And our basketball program is incredibly popular. We have two teams, it's so popular. They just had a tournament set to do it over at former high school. But earlier this year, the C I A C, which is the governing body of all athletics in the state of Connecticut, in conjunction with the Special Olympics Organization nationwide, sent out applications for schools to be recognized as Unified Champion Schools. In order to do that, there are certain criteria that had to be met.
George, you want to go over criteria?
Listen, George, now he's the person who's in charge of Unified Sports for the C I A C. He came down today to explain a little bit about the program and the recognition.
Thank you, John. This is a national award that is being awarded for the first time this year, and there are certain criteria that all schools need to meet. One is that you have to have Unified Sports teams, not just one team, and Shelton has two. You have to have a unified club within the school that maintains some kind of ability to have leadership opportunities in the school. Shelton has that very nicely. And the third thing is that they have to have programs that bring other people into the program itself, into Unified Sports. And they do that as far as bringing the school and people within the community into their program. And the final thing, and really, the criteria that falls on your desk, is the fact that the program has to be sustainable. That is, it is not just here one day along the desk. And as John has mentioned, this program has been in existence for over 10 years. So there certainly is sustainability. And the reason for the sustainability is the support that this program receives from Board of Education and the community of Shelton. So we're very, very proud to be able to award Shelton this award. And the reason, if I could just quickly sum up the whole philosophy behind Unified Sports, is that it provides an avenue for kids to get to know each other. It's all about inclusion. That's the bottom line with Unified Sports. And we use sports as an avenue to create that inclusion. And I'll maybe use this as one short story that just epitomizes what the program is all about. Couple of years ago, two years ago, we ran a program for middle schools. And we had a basketball game, and a mother came up to us at the end of the game, and she thanked us profusely for the fact that we have this program. And we said, "Well, that's what we do." And she says, "No, you don't understand. My daughter's in seventh grade, and this is the first time she's been invited to a peer's birthday party." And that all came about because of Unified Sports. It has a tremendous impact on the culture and the climate of our schools, and it gets kids to understand and accept differences. So we're very, very proud of Shelton. They are certainly a model for the state, and they are well-deserving of this national award. So thank you very much.
So this is the banner that will hang probably in our gymnasium, and we're kind of excited about that.
And I have to say that the program itself, I have to say that the program itself would not be anywhere near as successful, and we haven't had the sustained growth, a, without the support of the board, but also without our coaching staff, Karen Ivancek and Mike Ambidella, and Tracy Hussey before then, have done just an absolutely incredible job of promoting the program and getting it through to us next. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Public hearing. At this time, we allow up to five minutes for each speaker who would like to address the board, and this is according to Board Policy 9325. And as a reminder, no Board of Education employee, student, or community member should be defamed within public comments. Would anybody care to address the board? And if you would, please give your name and your address for the record.
Sure. I'm sure. Shelton, 49 Corvada Avenue, Shelton, Connecticut. Coming for the birthday in Tucker Loop, we've got our first level of tournament in teams that we have here in Shelton. It is an amazing program that we have here, and I'm super proud to be the coach of two of the teams that we have. There are four teams here, and of the four teams in Shelton, three made it to the state level. And our Intermediate School team was the state champions. They had the Champions Award, and they were the highest-ranking team in the state of Connecticut. I would also like to publicly thank the board members who came to support those kids. They love when you come and ask questions. It was a great day. It was held at our own Shelton High School, both the regional tournament and the state tournament. So we're excited for those kids and to see where their travels will take them to next. Thank you.
Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Sensing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is approval of the minutes. We had in our packets the minutes of our regular meeting of November 16, 2016.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made to approve the minutes, is there a second? Motion has been made in second, is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, communications with the board, I'm not aware of any. All righty. Superintendent's report and action items.
I'm just going to make my comments just slightly out of order. Very briefly, our strategic planning group is moving forward with a lot of passion and energy. There's a lot of great work being done. We held a steering committee meeting today, but I don't want to say too much about it because at the next board meeting, we're going to be doing a full presentation as promised to the board, and so I want to keep you in suspense, but you know there's a lot of great work going on, and I know you all know, and I'm very proud to be part of this group with a great group of professionals that are really thinking about the future of our district and the future of our students. So I want to hold you suspense for the January meeting where there'll be a detailed presentation and good roundtable discussion with the board. The arts are an integral part of what it means to be human. The arts are part of something that defines us as a species, the ability to make art. And we saw some examples of that tonight here in the lobby. We have so much to be proud of in Shelton. There's always work to be done, and we have great professionals that are really helping kids explore what it means to be artistic in a variety of ways. And I'd like to ask our highly-regarded leader in that area, Deb Keller, to step forward and say a few words about the work that she and all of the members of the team do to promote the arts and promote a sense of artistic sensibility among our students.
Thanks, Dr. Coet. I don't want to say too much.
For the purposes of television, could you speak into the mic so that it's being recorded?
But I don't want to be on television.
You don't have to try to step. Thank you, I appreciate it.
First of all, I want to thank Dr. Coet and Mrs. Rosner for helping us make this happen tonight. I'm excited because it's nice to see that you are recognizing a group of individuals, and I'm not against anybody, because I understand this, athletes or the highly-challenged academic kids. It's nice to see that you're putting some emphasis on the arts. And we are in the process of, right now, of expanding our art program and our music programs. And I don't want to say too much because I am scheduled to be the teaching speaker at Teaching and Learning next month, but you saw a sample of what we're starting to do as far as bringing into a Shelton extreme program, which is something that we've been lacking for many years. And because we have our foot in the door, and we're just going to keep that door going wider and wider and wider, which is great, we're starting to put emphasis on different avenues of the arts. That's just a small sampling of what you saw tonight. We're going to have an all-district art show in the spring, where it's just knock your socks off, the stuff that these kids produce. It's just, sometimes I feel like I'm going into the Met with all the wonderful art that our kids have produced, whether it be photography and, you know, charcoal. And I'm a music geek, and I don't know that much about art, and I'm always calling Mrs. Rosner and saying, "Okay, I think this is right," but I call upon her background as an art teacher. But we want to thank you for supporting us. We appreciate the opportunity tonight to give you a small sampling of what we're doing. I know you allowed the jazz band to perform a couple of weeks ago at the Caps Dinner, and the kids truly enjoyed that. And we need more exposure on this venue of Shelton. This is too much, not that we're not against sports again, I said, yeah, it was great that they went as far as they did, but you go to the football game and you hear the band playing all sorts of pep music and rah rah rah, but it's nice to get to see another facet of it. And it's great to see that there are so many kids with talent. We were talking in the lobby about the artwork, and I know Mrs. Rosner, Mrs. Williams, and Dr. Smith, and Mr. Searners were looking over the artwork, and you look and you go, "Hey, I had that kid when he was like that small, and now look what he's producing." And there's a student that produced artwork at the high school. He's an autistic child, and his artwork was incredible. So there is a place for every child to do well and expand their talents. And you would never know it, and I would never know it, but you look at his artwork and you say, "Oh, my God, it's beautiful." And it's the same thing with musicians. We have kids that that's where their natural talent and ability is, and that's what they're going to shine at. We should be enriching them and offering them more and more opportunities to do this. So I mean, I like the idea that you're taking brief snippets from more different board meetings to expose you as to what we have in Shelton. I mean, you're really great about coming out and going things, but there's a bigger side of Shelton besides what you say. Thank you.
All right, in our packet, we have information about an approved field trip for Shelton High School Robotics. Go to the New England District Championship in New Hampshire on April 5 through 8 of 2017. Board action items to be presented for a vote, consideration of the board to approve the request of the Shelton Intermediate School Cheerleading Team to conduct fundraising event during the 2016-17 school year, as outlined in their request.
Excuse me, Mr. Board Chairman. On the field trip request form, I think we have an oversight to the cost of the trip. So if we could just kind of look into that and get back to us about that? I'm sure there's some kind of cost incurred.
They're showing, Mark, just to jump in, this, what we have in front of, at least what I have in front, is a trip to St. Louis, and the agenda says a New Hampshire trip.
And these are typically annual events.
No, no, I understand that, but the document is for St. Louis. This is all I have.
That's apparently an error in the packet.
You have a totally different one than you did.
Oh. Yeah. Certainly do.
Good catch.
Okay.
That's why it's hard to find.
There you go.
Okay, well.
Maybe we can get some cost.
We can come back to that at our next meeting. All right, let's continue on with where we were at on presented for a vote for the S I S cheerleading team. Would somebody care to make a motion?
Some.
That motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made in second, is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consideration of the board to approve the request of Shelton High School Girls Basketball Booster Club to conduct fundraising activities during the 2016-2017 school year.
So, Mr. Chairman, second.
A motion has been made in second, is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, comments by the board chair. A few things I'd like to talk about this evening first. We got the CAE Board Recognition Award this year, and we've gotten this for a number of years. Last year, we happened to miss out because I was stuck in the hospital on a day that an event that needed to be attended happened. But we're back to getting recognized for it, which is a good thing. Tonight is the fourth anniversary of Massacre at Newtown, and the world has changed a lot in those four years, and so have we. Shelton has made significant improvements to our school's security in that timeframe in every building, and we've also taken the lead by working to promote the Alice Program in our district, and I think that's something that we can be really proud of as a district. Deb talked about the Shelton High School Jazz Band playing at the Caps Dinner a couple of weeks ago. They were insanely good. I put several videos of them up on YouTube, and they've gotten quite a few likes, and it's making our district look good. I mean, the district has also put them on their Facebook page, and so it would pay to look at them if you have them. They really are very talented players. It was terrific to see them. Tonight's performance was another example of some of the arts that we have going on in our district. And, you know, it was great to hear the choir, it was great to hear the strings, and the artwork itself, some of that stuff, boy, I'd be thrilled to have it hanging in my house. It was really nice. The Unified Sports Banner, I'm wondering, is that connected with our Best Buddies Program?
Yes, that was one of the programs you mentioned, a club activity that we have.
Yeah, okay. Because I've heard good things about our Best Buddies Program as well, and, you know, it shows that we are doing a lot as a district to produce students who are well-rounded adults and ready for the future. And then finally, systematic winning the state championship for F L L Robotics was terrific, and I was also proud of the fact that that tournament and the one before it, those were organized and run by our high school students. And, you know, again, a terrific example of what we are doing to prepare our students for leadership in the future. Otherwise, that's all I've got for now. So let's move on to the next thing, which is reports of standing committees, teaching and learning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Teaching and Learning Committee did not meet this month. Our next meeting's scheduled for January 10, Tuesday, 4:00 P. M. in our office.
All righty. Finance, when?
Okay, the Finance Committee met before this meeting, and the only thing we brought it on was to set the meeting dates for the following year. We reviewed our current budget and are looking at issues in special ed and special ed transportation.
Policy Committee, Kate is not able to be here tonight because of a work commitment. She did provide written notes, but I'll read them quickly. Policy Committee met on Tuesday, December 6, at 4:00 P. M. Discussion was held to clarify building use rental for multiple consecutive days. Previous information that group renting our facilities for consecutive days would be charged 25% of the rate for the first day was verified. There is a group looking to use our high school gym for two separate weekends in the late winter and May. This cost would be quoted to them. Consensus was that there was no need to change the printed fee or policy at this time. A presentation was made by Porter McKinnon of the Shelton High School Quarterback Club with regards to display of banners at home football games. This booster club needs new means to raise funds. A draft of possible regulations was reviewed by the Quarterback Club, and discussion was held. John Nisziens, in support of this proposal, stated multiple groups have made this request. In short, banners would be hung and removed the same day as the event. All sponsors and banner artwork would be subject to approval by administration. A maximum size was discussed, as well as number of sponsors per banner. Banners would be attached to existing fencing or structures with removable ties. And the proposal was made by a committee member for the Quarterback Club to work with other booster clubs to refine expectations, and the item will be carried forward for further discussion on our February agenda. Wording for a policy regarding transport of students to and from school events in private vehicles was reviewed and referred back for further wordsmithing. The item was carried over for the January agenda. General discussion about chronic absenteeism and the crafting of an attendance policy. ESSA is allowing for flexibility. Other districts are implementing a variety of consequences and procedures, and the discussion will be ongoing. Finally, discussion was held about magnet school students participating in Shelton High School events. Dr. Coet has been pushing the state for guidelines. Right now, magnet schools can participate in public school activities, but it is up to each district to implement their own guidelines and/or policies. Policy Committee will next meet on January 10 at 5:00 P. M. Reports of special committees, CES.
Mr. Chairman, we don't meet in December. Next meeting will be in January. I don't know if either you or Dr. Coet want to speak to the legislative session, basically, there was a meeting of board chairs, superintendents, and held at CES facilitated by Janet Robinson, who is the superintendent of Stratford. If you want to speak to that or Dr. Coet.
I'd be happy to talk about that. Dr. Coet has something, that'd be great. The Legislative Breakfast was just this past week, and quite frankly, it was the best one I've ever attended. There was spirited discussion about a number of things that are of importance to districts in this area. There was some discussion about the charter school problem, where they're going to be charging us tuition and so forth. And then also, there was considerable discussion about trying to change the burden of proof as respects to special education. Currently, the burden of proof falls on the districts and not the parents, and this leads to some interesting choices being made. One of the comments that was made, paraphrasing, was, "You can end up with the parents coming in and talking to a doctor and demanding knee surgery when that might not be the actual best solution to the problem. It may be that the person needs physical therapy or better shoes." And so the thinking is that if we have more fact-based decisions being made with respect to the I E Ps, it's going to be more efficient for the districts and better for the students. Dr. Coet.
I think that covers it. It was a very positive meeting, I'm very glad CES does it, and it's clear that legislators, board members, and superintendents want to be part of that roundtable discussion.
All right, CAE.
Well, I've enclosed a CAE liaison newsletter for your proposal. I think it's pretty much self-explanatory, and you will be getting more information as these events come up. We'll get this in our mail, so there's no need for me to go through these things and discuss them.
Okay, I'm not aware of any unfinished business, and I'm not aware of any new business. For your information, we have our vacancy report, the staff and stipend actions, and the enrollment report. My second favorite part of the meeting, highlights. Kathy, I believe you had something.
Okay, but first let Kate do hers. I don't want to steal her thunder tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome, my dear.
I just have to make comments about the first level, first level, I am telling you, I was blown away when I went, I attended both of the sessions, the events, and the kids are, they're focused, they're energized, they're excited to talk to you about what they're doing, and it's really mind-blowing. I got some discussion with Mrs. Niski on how these things actually work with the programs, the apps and so forth. It's an amazing thing, and I really like to see it. I'd like to see it affect, you know, even the lower grades. Maybe next time you can get the fourth grades to come on a field trip to one of these events. And then maybe get something going on, something that's a school-wide thing, or something for everybody. Thank you, I was just thrilled with it.
Okay, I have 17 items, no numbers. Okay, I just want to say thank you to Shelton Intermediate School for their holiday video, which I viewed today. I was really feeling a little down, and I saw it, and boy, and I showed it with my husband, who was rarely impressed with anything, and he was very impressed, and he said that Ken, you should be a teacher of administrators, so that was a real compliment from him.
And we knew who the bus driver was, right?
And we knew the bus driver did a good job.
Yeah.
I see a future in that. No, I don't. And I'm looking forward to, Booth Hill School had a wonderful cultural literacy night, and I was so impressed. And Dr. Ritter and I went together, and it was probably 150, 200 people, and they had food, and all the kids had to come with, and they got a passport in every country they visited, they got their passports stamped. It was, kudos to your staff, you and your staff, they did an outstanding job. The other thing is that I'm looking forward to tomorrow, tomorrow Long Hill School's chorus, and I heard a little preview, and it was exceptional, so I'm looking forward to attending that, as well as Booth Hills on the 20th in the morning and Mulhegan's in the afternoon. I also want to say congratulations to Dr. Smith and her staff for all of the great awards and acknowledgements that have been shared with us. and acknowledgements that have been shared with us. Thank you very much because great things are happening at Shelton High School and we need to get more of that out. Thank you. Now, the last item is, I have to say kudos to Dr. Cluett for his dedication and commitment to Shelton, the community. All I hear is about how you're up and about. And the other thing is especially the Word of the Week, which has really sparked a community buzz. So we have a little presentation for you from the board, just something small, okay? This is, well, this is big. You can open that first because I don't think you have it.
Oh, my goodness. I can see all the words of the week.
Words of the week for 2,000 years. And then, so that's for your tree. I would put it at the bottom because I put it at the top of my tackle loop. And that's your second little token from all of us for the holidays, so.
Wow, that is very, very sweet. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right. And it's orange and black.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
That's it.
Okay, anybody else under highlights? Anybody else under highlights? Well, I'll just say, I hope everybody enjoys your holidays and we are adjourned. Thank you so much to everyone.